New microphones. Guys, we're going to call a meeting of order. New microphones. Guys, we're going to call a meeting of order.
Here.
Councilman Frank.
Here.
Councilman Drew.
Here.
And I am here, so we have full council. I ask Councilman Taylor, would you please leave us an invitation and pledge?
Can we please stand? Thank you. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for your manifold grace that you bestowed upon each of us here in Collington County, South Carolina. Lord, as we conduct the business of the county, we pray that your grace would be on the life. We thank you for your mercy. Lord, we thank you, and we are grateful for all of the great works that are being done by people who have done their share to support the safety, the security, the comfort. Lord, we believe that working together, you said man devises the plan, but God directs his steps. So we pray, Lord, that you would grant us wisdom as we go into the conduct of business. We thank you for the administration and the staff and this council, for every other political subdivision that is represented in this place tonight. We thank you for every citizen and everyone that does its share to help us, Lord, grow as a community, and we give your name to praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I'm glad to lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to take a minute to recognize some visitors we have here. We have Representative Robbie Robbins. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate that. And Mayor Crawford Moore from town of Pennington Beach. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Looking for a motion to approve of the agenda.
So.
We have a motion in a sec. Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion carries and answers. Going for a hundred and five, looking for a motion to approve of the minutes. Do along the other receipt.
I'll make a motion if we approve the minutes. Regular meeting July 8, 2025, special meeting July 16, 2025, and special meeting of July 30, 2025.
Right.
We have a motion in a second on the tables. Any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion carries and answers. Moving to awards and recognitions at this time. We have one here. Proclamation. I'm going to read that out now. Proclamation recognizing the outstanding service of Collington County Fire and Rescue, Collington County Sheriff's Office, South Carolina Highway Patrol, and other first responders. Whereas on July 22, 2025, a tragic accident occurred on I-95, Interstate 95, near mile marker 40, Southbound. Resulting in a critical and life-threatening situation that required immediate and coordinated emergency response. And whereas Collington County Fire and Rescue, the Collington County Sheriff's Office, the South Carolina Highway Patrol, EMS personnel, dispatchers, and numerous other first responders courageously and selflessly responded to the scene under extraordinary and difficult circumstances. And whereas these dedicated men and women worked tirelessly to secure the scene, bring their aid to the injured, manage traffic safely, investigate the cause, and support those impacted by the incident. All while facing the emotional and physical toll that comes responding to such tragedies. And whereas the bravery, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to the public safety represents the very best in our emergency services community. And are a testament to the training, compassion, duty, duty to serve. And whereas it is fitting and proper to publicly recognize the community's first responders for their outstanding service, professionalism, and dedication during this difficult event. Therefore, be it resolved, and on behalf of Collington County Council and all citizens, I hereby extend our deepest gratitude and highest highest commendations, commendation to all Collington County Fire and Rescue personnel, Collington County Sheriff's Office personnel, South Carolina Highway Patrol officers, EMS teams, dispatchers, and supporting emergency responders for their exemplary service during this tragic accident on I-95 on July 22, 2025. Father, let this proclaim, let this proclamation serve as a lasting tribute to, let this proclamation serve as a lasting tribute to the courage, teamwork, and resilience in the face of adversity adopted this 12th day of August 2025.
I move.
Reading. Judge.
Have a motion in a second on the table. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, like, when I worked about the wreck out on 95, I had no concern because we, Chief Barry McElroy and his staff, and the sheriff, Phil, and his staff, and everybody. We knew that everybody would be taken care of, even though it was a loss of life. They always do a professional job, and they always do, you can count on them. So I wasn't worried what was going to happen because they know what they're doing when they go to the scene. And I just want to thank you personally, me and this council. We appreciate y'all so much. Thank you.
Chairman, I would echo the same, and also just say, in reading that, it really highlights collaborative effort between all of our different agencies. I know they don't work together all the time, but when there's an emergency, they all come together and work together. And again, you know, I think we have some better services than that. I know we do because many counties around the state have modeled themselves after us. And we are very glad that we have y'all, and I know the folks that were there, and we're very glad that you showed up when you did. So again, just thank you all very much.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, I would like to echo those sentiments again, and certainly my son was on that interstate during that time. He said, Dad, this is horrific. This is very bad. I said, Son, we have great teams of people who work and serve tirelessly. He said, But they're going to be out there for hours. They're going to be out there a long time to clean this up. This is very, very bad. So our prayers went out to all the families and those impacted by it, certainly, certainly for the strength and integrity and the professionalism of all of our emergency responders and our hospital and the team. Everybody worked so cohesively. It's a great testament of, you know, the fine work that can be done when we work together as a community. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to tell you thank you too as well, and I know y'all trained hard and worked hard, and all that paid off. Thank you.
I would like to second everyone, follow up all of that, agree with it. I don't know if y'all, anybody that got to see the pictures or read the reports of that accident, but that was absolutely, and would love to look at, much less I can't imagine responding to this. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, all of you, would you do all in favor, all in favor of a proclamation? Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you vote? If the proclamation is close to the pass, we will take a picture of everybody. Okay, guys. Okay, we're going to move on now to a appearance and a presentation, and that's Community Innovations with Sheila Kirch and Collington Voice Winner. And I'll go ahead and tell how to put it up here to sing in the background. About two weeks ago, this was.
Good evening, Chairman Baron and Councilmen. Thank you for having us. My name is Sheila Kirch, and I just want to tell you a little bit about Community Innovation. For those of you who have not heard it, I am so privileged to be raised by our 2025 winner, Jasmine Sherrill. And she will be singing immediately after I tell you a little bit about Community Innovation. So first of all, as a child of the county, I was born and raised here in Walterboro, South Carolina. I spent 28 years serving at the Collington County Memorial Library, Children's Library, and enjoyed every minute of it. Retired a few years ago and wanted to do something with my extra time. And it was placed on my heart to do, to start a nonprofit that we could continue the work that we started at the library because I didn't want to sit down just yet. And so the Community Innovation is basically dealing with children, teens, and adults, and we are covering four pillars. And please let, let me just make this notation that this is not to kind of overwrite someone else. It's just to add to it. We're supplement, okay? We're just adding to it. Health, mentoring, education, and parenting are our four pillars. And we started with our first program, Raising Highly Capable Kids, and that was a grant we received that was non-monetary. And we got this grant to cater top parenting portion of building stronger families and empowering parents with competent tools and skills they need for healthy, caring, responsible children. In that program, we are, we are helping parents develop 40 developmental skills in their children. And our, another program, let me just say that Raising Highly Capable Kids, we actually graduated 30 parents since we started from that program. And we trained 20 to be facilitators of this program, and yes, they had to be trained. And then we have the Literary Tea with Palmetto State Authors. We started this to, to celebrate and glamorize literacy. So I don't know if you know it or not, but I love literacy. And they, someone called me Miss Literacy maybe 20 years ago, and I took a hold of it and started naming myself Miss Literacy since. But this is something that we want to do. We want to glamorize literacy. I think if we glamorize it, I think that children will get a hold of it, and as adults, they will be very literate, and they can carry our county forward. But this Literary Tea, and I'm going to ask Jasmine to take that to him. And that is something we've done. This is our, this is going to be our third year in 2026, Lord willing. And we are, what we do is we invite local authors, Palmetto State authors, to come and share their books. And we have a writing contest where we get the writer, the winners of the writing contest to read their work. And then we have tea, we have hors d'oeuvres, and we get a little book sign at the same time, okay? And of course, we, we do a little extra. We dress in hat and gloves for girls, and guys, you've got to wear your little tie and little suit just to make it glamorous, okay? And then we have our family carnival. This is something, we can't call it carnival. It was originally carnival, now we call it Family Fun Zone. Because we, we actually partnered with the Rice Festival. I think Scott was helpful with us getting that done. Not that Scott, another Scott. But, but we, we do Family Fun Zone, and it's a part of the Rice Festival. And what we do is create little fun prizes and give, and have families play games, and we talk, and we make it fun, just to make that family connection. Then there is our Young Authors Program, which we started some years ago, but we wanted to continue that forward and see our great place to share it. And we help train young people ages 10 to 22 to become authors, published authors. And actually, we're partnering with the Collington County School District right now, Jessica Williamson. We are actually doing that starting this month. We're going to be hopefully seeing 60 young people in, in addition to her singing talents, she's a writer as well, so she's going to be joining that program. But that is something I think that, but that's something we do. All right, the next one is CI Music Awards, and, and this award is given to community members that the board and our sponsors can donate or can recommend. And I have to say, one of the winners for this year is in the house today. I hope she doesn't mind me calling her out. Ms. Lauren Clark is here, and she's in the audience, and she's going to be honored today. I mean, not today, but next, this November, November 1st. And we're going to have it honoring three people. It's Laura Clark, Serena Mimicure, and one more person. I'll tell you in a minute. But it's three people we're honoring, and we are, oh yeah, Debbie Skolton. So we do this in order to share or recognize and appreciate the efforts of community members that improve Collington County's image, encourage loyalty, and increase awareness in Collington. And, and in Collington County, and to share what CI is doing in the community. We also have Christmas with seniors where we actually spend time with seniors. One of the things that I enjoy doing is spending time with seniors. And have always enjoyed spending time with seniors. And we originally wanted to do something for Christmas, but the board decided that they wanted to, to give it away. So we decided, well, with children, give it all the time. You have organizations giving to children all the time. So they, I said, so, and that was, this is my idea, I have to say. They said, why don't we choose seniors? So we went to different senior centers, and they were delighted to have us, and we sang with them. We gave them a small token, and we also allowed them to share their stories with us. So that's something we, we're continuing. Then we have the mentoring program where we actually mentor one-on-one with young people. And I had the privilege of mentoring her in singing as well, just giving them tips and sharing, spending time with her and giving them. So that's just one example of what we do. We also mentor long distance as well as group mentoring. We have story times with Miss Literacy where we go out and share stories. We give out books, and as well as we encourage children to love reading. Then we have Collington Voice. Is that Collington Voice? Is that? Collington Voice. And that's, this is the last one that we're going to talk about today. And it's because of her that we're here today because we wanted to show you that our young people are very talented, and they just need a venue to share that talent. And CI will gladly take advantage of that and share the talent of our young people. So this is a contest where they can sing, and they can stand before an audience and share. And she's going to do that today. Her name is Jasmine Sherrill. She's 12 years old. She hails us from Kenya. This is her first year here. And her mom is here. Her mom is here today with her. And she goes to Collington County Middle School. And anything else you want to share, you have that opportunity. So please help me welcome our 2025 winner of Collington Voice.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Jasmine Sherrill, and I'll be singing "The Truth" by Megan Wood. How many times can you hear the same lie before you start believing? An enemy keeps whispering, "Me, swear this death is all that I'm hearing." I used to know who I was. Now I look in the mirror and I'm not so sure. Lord, I don't want to listen to the lies anymore. The truth is I am my father's child. I make him proud and I make him smile. I was made in the image of a perfect king. He looked at me and wouldn't change a thing. Truth is I am truly loved by a God who's good, and I'm not good enough. I don't belong to the lies. I belong to you. And that's the truth. When I feel like there's so much noise leaving rent free in my head. Heaven finds me in a still small voice. Heaven finds me in that still small voice and it sounds like grace instead. You remind me who I am when I look in the mirror and I'm not so sure. Lord, I don't want to listen to the lies anymore. The truth is I am my father's child. I make him proud and I make him smile. I was made in the image of a perfect king. Who looked at me and wouldn't change a thing. The truth is I am truly loved by a God who's good. And I'm not good enough. I don't belong to the lies, I belong to you. And that's the truth. I know who I am because I know who you are. And I hold your truth inside of my heart. I hope the lies are always going to chime with me, but I've never been so sure. The truth is I am my father's child. I make him proud and I make him smile. I was made in the image of a perfect king. Who looked at me and wouldn't change a thing. The truth is I am truly loved by a God who's good. And I'm not good enough. I don't belong to the lies, I belong to you. And that's the truth.
Thank you, thank you so much. And please get the word out that we are doing this every year. We're looking for some top singers in Collin County. Thank you.
I'd like to say something, um, I got the feeling that listening to Ms. Jasmine at this convocation for the school district and it was just a beautiful night as a president. Thank you. And Ms. Sheila, I know, who knows, you, I know you're, uh, home, or you're, uh, POI officer, my wife's not here, so you guys get to the presentation.
Yes, but hopefully we can get more people on board that would help us do these things.
Yes, thank you. Thank y'all for what you came here to ask.
I didn't, you know, she's made council proud and Collin County proud. And I was looking at her long, I could tell her long. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Well, that sets the tone for the next panelist. Um, we're going to public comment now. And this is a time for you, for the public to come up and let us know what's going on in your world. So I'm going to read this just for, um, a little decorum here. Say, "Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public comment portion of County Council. We value your input and appreciate you taking the time to share your perspectives with us. To assure everyone, if you wish to speak, you have an opportunity. Each individual, we give them three minutes. Please be mindful of the time limit. We're not going to come, I don't plan on cutting you off hard. It's not loaded up tonight, but we just have to be mindful of that. We have a new board here that's going to count for us. Please don't feel pressured by it. Let us know, give us your input. Um, during this time, in respect and request, all comments be addressed to council as a whole. Maintain respectful professional tone, avoid any personal attacks or disruptive behavior. There is no comment from council during the public comment. Let's remember to treat each other with courtesy and listen to all viewpoints respectfully. Your cooperation in maintaining a productive and respectful environment is greatly appreciated. Thank you." We're going to the list now. And we have Frank Santorell. Please come up, state your name for the record and...
My name is Frank Santorell and I'm the resident of Collin County. Um, I'm retired, retired as a project engineer for a Fortune 200 company. Uh, I want to talk about the power plant that's being built at Canodes. Uh, I was licensed in the state of New Jersey to upgrade a power plant of unwounded horsepower. So I know a little bit about cogeneration. Cogeneration plant like they're building in Canodes is the second most efficient type of power generation that exists in our technology today. Uh, the first, uh, most efficient is, uh, hydropower. And I haven't seen the Edstof Falls, okay? So that doesn't exist for us. Um, if we don't encourage, uh, support and move this project along, we are not going to be only cheating, uh, the existing residents, but our future residents of Collin County. Collin County needs the infrastructure and the power to grow. Um, and not only to grow in size, but to grow in ability. Um, we're, we're here, uh, it's 80 degree humidity today, but we're all comfortable. Uh, this infrastructure is stuff that we need. Um, it's a necessity. The thing that's important now is what direction they bring in the power. Uh, the fossil fuel that is going to fuel this gas turbine. Um, there's various, um, directions that they can pass. Uh, I see, um, people having meetings about, uh, environmental issues. Well, the only thing that I can tell you is that the one path is the northern route that they're taking. It's all owned by Santee Cooper and various other entities that are willing to build this property forward to support this gas pipeline. Uh, it's a low-pressure gas pipeline. Uh, it, as far as I know, it offers very, very little environmental impact and will ultimately, after construction, be a hundred-foot wide swath. Um, we need it, we need it. Um, and we need not to, not to, um, fight it. It's something that needs to be done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Santorell. Next, I have a Susan, and forgive me, the last name starts with a K, I cannot read that.
It's me.
Sukey, got you, I'm looking for that.
Well, Susan, my real name. Good evening, council, good evening, citizens. I'm just here to announce that on Monday, the September 29th, at 6:00 PM, at the Collin County Library, our legislative delegation will meet. This is your opportunity to hear from them and to have a public comment. And the same rules apply, short, sweet, to the point, and very nicely done. But we are looking forward to having you again, September the 29th. It is a Monday, 6:00 PM, at the Collin County Memorial Library. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Susan. At this point, I have Mr. Herbert Hires Jr. Please come up, state your name and, uh, right now.
Uh, Herbert Hires Jr. Um, on July 31st, my friends had a pack of dogs come in and attack our cows. They injured a bunch of cows. The next week, on August, uh, the 8th, we had another attack, same group of dogs. Done probably eight, $10,000 worth of damage to our animals. And we're, we've done more work, I feel like, than the people that get paid to do the job. We're been running out, 10, 11 o'clock at night, we drive trucks. We get up at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning, come home, we go hunt dogs and eat them until our animals don't get destroyed again. So we need to get something done as far as animal control on dogs that are attacking. Because it's just like humans. A life is a life. Regardless whether it's animals, dog, cow, whatever it is, we pay money for them and they get destroyed and nobody else is helping. So there, I'll tell you more about what's going on.
Thank you. Next, we have this gentleman, Martin. Please state your name for the record.
Devin Martin. Um, I've got a list on my phone here of where I want to make points of. So I was also a part, that's my family right there, a part of the cows that got attacked. Um, I personally talked to the animal control officer and nothing against them, it's just what we discussed. Um, I want to start off, I think I don't think all pit bulls are bad at all. But the animal control officer spoke to us Friday, last Friday, and her and I were talking. And I said, well, what are we going to do? And she said, well, I'm not really sure what to do. My hands are tied. And I said, okay, how are your hands tied? I said, we've done nothing the first time, but I'm going to do anything the second time. And she said, well, I would like for you and your cousin to ride and show us where y'all believe the dogs come from. So we took animal control and we showed them where the dogs came from. We stopped, we were just riding around, so what else do we want to do? This is what we've been doing personally for the last dozen days, was driving around with pretty men. She said, again, I don't really know what to do, my hands are tied. I said, okay. My second point was, as I asked, I asked her, I said, so these dogs attacked our cows, what are we going to do to prevent them from attacking somebody's child? And she said, well, I don't believe these dogs would attack someone's child. And I said, okay. I left it at that. Um, I also told her, I said, so we come home every day, take care of these animals, put up fences, keep our animals contained, but someone else's animals come in and attack ours. What are we, you know, I asked him, what are we supposed to do? She said, well, that's not really the point. I'm just trying to just to make a solution on what we can do to help prevent our animals from getting attacked. And I don't believe there was any sympathy for our animals whatsoever. They were more worried about what they were going to do. They were more worried about the sympathy for the pit bulls that we were looking for. And I just, I don't believe that. There was one person that I talked to that seemed to get me answers. Now, anything I asked him, and that was a deadig, it believes in him, it was Shrewby. He came out there Friday. And any question I asked him, if he did not have the answer, he called his, um, superior and he got the answer. So I do thank him for that, for any of the questions I had answered. But, um, my cows personally was, um, I don't know if y'all are dating a cow, but they're registered. I paid a lot of money for her mother, and she was worth money to me. And she was, there's nothing I can do about it. It's like having a registered dog and their ears didn't work. Our selling point was her ears. That is the type of cow she was, she was a brawn of cow, had big floppy ears. That was her selling point. But I just don't feel like animal control really did anything for our animals or had anything to do towards them, or helped us do anything. That's all I have.
Thank you, Devin, appreciate that. And next on the list is Philip Adams.
Philip Adams, I was, I was carrying my cows as well. The first day when they got attacked, we called. The gentleman seemed to be more concerned with making sure the dogs was off of our place. Not downing anybody, I'm just stating facts. He went, said he had a lead. I told my brother, I said, I'm going to ride and see where he goes because I want to see where this lead is at. He goes straight to his neighbor's house, straight, right out of my yard, straight to his house. My daughter gets on the phone, starts looking, you know, finds the girl on Facebook. The girl was living at the house a week prior to this. I think she abandoned the one dog. Um, they said they didn't know who she was. Once again, my daughter got on there, found her mugshot. Um, she also went far as finding the dog laying on the bed with the girl. Girl's holding the dog in her arms. My daughter's the one took the picture of the dogs in the field. I don't know if you've seen them or didn't see them, they were on Facebook. Second go around, we went to catch bull calves. My partner and my daughter and his son, anyway, we were all back there. I got back there to them, I wound up in the water up here. I waited across the swamp. Yet that was my choice. But I meant, I was going to figure out where these dogs come from. We did not find them that day, exactly. I had a real good idea. And then this past, um, no, actually yesterday, we actually pinned one. We got behind the dogs, one of them broke in the ruin. My partner chased the dog, right straight to the house it went, past the lady, not her dog. Called to multiple people on the street. We've had multiple problems with this lady. Animal control's called out multiple times. It had been a civil scene. Um, and one last thing I got to say, I went around the neighborhood myself and asked people. And I found out that there was a kid hemmed up in his backyard by this dog. And he is a Dorchester County employee because he drives a Dorchester County SUV. And he lived right around the corner from us. So I just don't feel like help being put out there. I would love to help anybody that's got animals. Somebody called me across town. I don't mind driving over there and helping. I don't mind asking people. Because if you don't ask, you don't find out. If you sit in your pickup and enjoy air conditioning, you'll never know nothing. I appreciate everybody taking a minute to hear my statement.
Thank you, Ms. Adams, appreciate it, appreciate it. Mr. Michael Adams at the side.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for having us today and having us invited and allowing us to speak. Um, my grandfathers had cows there, my dads had cows there, now we have them. I'm 56 years old, I was born and raised right there. We've never had a dog problem, ever. Now, what happened is a true accident. It is the first time, the second time, I didn't like finding out that people was told where the dogs were located. They'd been seen the Thursday, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. They'd been seen earlier in that week of the attack that had happened on that Friday. Well, if y'all have a store and y'all have, y'all own a store and somebody's coming and throwing rocks at your witness, I feel like you should be notified so you can kind of be on alert that this person might come back with rocks and throw at your witness. But the point is, is our cattle got ruined and they are, I mean, we'll keep them ever, but they are ruined. There's no way we can get monetary value for them, not now. But the punishment doesn't fit the crime because when animal control came out, they told us numerous times that their hands was tied. And if they did go and get the animal, all they could do was write a warning ticket or at the most, a $50 ticket. And I asked the lady, I said, well, ma'am, what are y'all going to do? And this was Friday afternoon. And the lady told me, I don't know what to do, but I have to do something. And she said, well, we can put traps out. I said, that is fine. Why wasn't the traps put out earlier? And she said, well, the traps cost $700 apiece. Can get on the internet, find those traps for about $2.50. Now, with that being said, I understand people love dogs and they want dogs and I love my cows and I want them. But I keep my cows shut up and my stuff shut up. And if you don't have but a acre yard, then keep your dog on your acre yard. But a child doesn't start, somebody didn't rob the bank their very first time. They did something small and built up to it. And that's what this dog has done. He steals chickens around the neighborhood. There's another lady down the road that's lost four pigs. She said he was the one, he was right there, same dog. Now he's ruined, selling him cattle. And all we're asking for is if the dog is found, he shouldn't be turned loose. Something like this, it's in their DNA to catch, they're going to catch. The dog should be euthanized or, you know, a law should be set up for that. And I appreciate y'all letting me speak and thanks all of y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. That was all the, um, people that signed up. But if anybody else wants to get up, please come up and speak and I'll state your name and your address.
If I may first, if y'all want to speak. I have a buddy of mine who's digging. That's on my here, y'all. That's on my here, y'all. For me, if y'all interested, I have more M.K. Ernand Adams. So, I'm Colette, so if you didn't meet me in June. I live on Mount Columbia Road, here in Colton County. I farm goats, I also have numerous horses, many horses, and I also breed, raise dogs. Stray dogs, hunting dogs have been a problem for me for the 15 years I've been raising So when we came in June, I was led to believe that there's laws on South Carolina's books about aggressive dogs running loose in our community. And that there was no way to hold people accountable for these circumstances and incidents. As I said, Farmer Fishburne dug this up for me in just a couple hours. These are South Carolina ordinance describing what is to be done with aggressive dogs in our community. And it clearly says, the owners of these dogs are to be prosecuted. $50 is what, what y'all said, $50?
Yes, ma'am.
According to that, it's $200 for 30 days in jail for the first offense. Second is $1,000, and further jail time. And then for each day after that's not satisfied, it's continued, it's considered a continued My question here, is the law was already there, why are we not enforcing it? Just in the last seven weeks since June's meeting, the Adams have had a horrible incident with pit bulls, costing them, just as they said, $8 to $10,000. Not to mention, I don't know what y'all farm, but I know you do, Scott, you have a whole petting zoo. I know you've got to think, imagine the devastation when you walk out and see animals that you love, that you care for, and that you've invested thousands of dollars into, countless hours, and they're slaughtered. And nobody can or will do anything to help you. Nobody even seems to care. This is a problem. It's not just a stray dog problem, we have a pit bull problem. Y'all, I just want to let y'all know as a dog breeder, I breed American Bulldogs, they're not pits, but they're not dogs I'm gonna let run loose in my community. They are bred to catch, hogs and bear. So therefore, they're not, unless I train them to be around livestock, they're not safe. Pit bulls, if you look at the statistics in our nation, our state, South Carolina alone, pit bulls are the most dangerous, the most lethal dog that exists. They are the cause of all, first and foremost, pit bulls are the cause of most attacks on humans and on animals. So in our county today, we have a pit bull problem. We have people raising pit bulls in their backyard, we have biting problems. This state is awful for dog fighting. I have to supervise my puppy parents to make sure my puppies are going to families and caring homes, for fear that they're gonna end up in that world, which is disgusting. I can't even believe South Carolina still lets this go on, and it is being let go on. I don't understand why it's not eradicated yet, because this is years of this going on in the state. And it's disgusting. And now it's in our county, it's been in our county, but now it's spilling out in our community. I just want y'all to, you know, Stephen, you grew up in Islandton, one of the biggest farming communities there. Imagine Rodney.
We're, uh, we don't call names.
This is, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, I'm just saying, this is a really big problem for us all here. You know?
Well, it's, trust me, I'm, I'm, I really, I really thank you. Thank you for sharing your passion, but thank you for sharing, thank all of you for sharing. I think the, well, let's, anybody else counsel that has anything to say, I think, this is gonna be addressed during the ministry agreement, partially as well.
According to Fishburne, as he read this, the sheriff's office is where this lives has responsibility. Animal control is not trained or able to handle these kind of dogs.
We'll be addressing that.
Thank you, and I'm sorry. Didn't even start, and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that can add to this time? You're in line, we will move on to, Chairman, you have a point of order. And I know it's breaking protocol, but I may. Does anybody have your objection?
I wasn't gonna speak about dogs, mostly kind of about, although I'm not really gonna speak about dogs, but I did think of what's exactly, something, what you handed us, essentially the College of County, it's adopted by this council. And it's 20, this is the whole section, 20 pages long, and I think there's nothing there to address all these concerns, frankly, that all of you are having. It's just a matter of interpretation and enforcement, and apparently, you know, in fair understanding of control, you know, I think Mr. Tripp's having another meeting, and to allow animal control and then the meeting stuff. I think your issues, your message is heard, I think those issues would be concerned, but I do think, not saying we don't need improvement, we always can use improvement. Always look for the words when you read statutes, some sense say shall, some say may. Shall means you do it, without question. May means it's discretionary. So, that's just a point. Mr. Tripp, I have full confirmation, Mr. Tripp, Mr. Meade, they're gonna come back with some good recommendations on that. But I wanted to speak pretty easily about, really, something that, there was one comment on it, on Mr. Stambrel about Kennedy plant, and I'd speak specifically to that for a moment if I could. And speaking from my personal opinion, I'm not flitting the opinion of this council, and I wanna preface that with, I'm not one of these teetotalers that thinks that climate change is a hoax, and that it's, you know, I'm not against science, or even vaccination, you know, I took the COVID shot, you didn't, I expect your taking, but I did. I'm also diabetic, have some heart issues, so you know, it's a little bit. But my point is this, that, you know, we live in a world that, we live around risk all day long, every day. And I'm sympathetic to the folks, particularly the folks that live there on the river. I know they have concerns, and their concern about this plant going there. But let me say this, the message that you're getting, just always be leery of the message that you're getting. We all got, I got one, here's a postcard I got from the coast of Constabulation League that had a meeting at Big's Barbecue last week. I got one of these cards, it's addressed to me, it's got my name on it, invited me to come and speak. Well, guess what? When I tried to speak, they shut me down, because I was a member of council, they wouldn't let me speak. And I'm saying that for this, nothing that they said there is technically incorrect. There's always gonna be risk in any kind of plant. And if you live there, you're gonna, you know, maybe you're more exposed than others, but there's so much more technology out there. There's carbon mapping now that can determine leaks of methane gas, and understand this, methane is what the gas is contained in natural gas. And when we closed Kennedy's the first time, we had courthouseful people came to the meet. And Kennedy's was considering, if you remember, purchasing a piece of croftic, they wanted to put a coal ash pond on it, and relocate all the coal ash from the Kennedy site and keep the plant running. And the residents were opposed. Well, that was primarily a CO2 issue, carbon dioxide, not methane. And one representative from one of the environmental organization, I won't call names, stood up at the podium at that meeting and said, quote, "If this were a natural gas plant, we wouldn't have these concerns." Well, here we are. And I'm not saying that, again, there is risk in anything. Most of the risks in natural gas plants probably come with transmission gases. Now, with carbon mapping and different things, they can find these leaks sooner and cap them off. Methane gas, if it goes into the environment, its CO2 lasts 100 years. Methane lasts 10 years. Methane may be a little bit stronger when it hits the environment. But what we need to focus on is not trying to, you know, we can't, can't just shut things down because it has risks. If I was that adverse risk, I would not take all that medication, Dr. F, or [BLEEP] when I go home at night, because when I read my insurance, I'm that adverse risk, I throw it all in the trash. I don't kill. But the reality is, it can get to me and keep me alive. Now, I'm not demeaning anybody that doesn't feel the way I do, I'm more than welcome to hear your opinions, but make sure you're getting the facts on this. And the facts are this, this meeting, when they had this meeting, this coast guard came in the mail and it said, protect the Aes basin from new gas plants and pipelines. And they stood up at the meeting and said, although they had a lot of information about this plant and things that were gonna happen, they had no idea where the pipeline was gonna run. And maybe that's true, I'm not saying that's not true, but Dominion Energy and Sandy Cooper shouldn't be criticized for the route they chose, they should be applauded. They choose a route that specifically went around the Aes basin, and potentially works this way down, assuming it all works out, and the development's safe. But they should be applauded for their efforts in this, in what they've done. And so, my point is, this is huge for Colton County, and I have heard some of the folks that are opposed to this stood up and said, Colton County's being sold to build goods, that most of the energy from this plant's gonna be sold to other counties. It might be. You know why? Because we're still in the process of trying to get economic development. I hope, so one day, some of that gas is gonna filter off to some more economic development products to deploy in my kids, my grandkids, and your kids, and your grandkids. That's the hope that we have to have. But if it's sold to other counties to begin with, guess what? The county's still gonna benefit somewhat. We have the jobs, we have the tax base. It's gonna help us get out of ditch, so to speak. And so, when I hear this, again, it's just a caution to the folks that are hearing these things, you know, we can't close everything down because there's a risk involved. If we did that, we wouldn't even be here tonight. You know? This meeting was, one of the biggest producers of methane gas, actually the largest producer of methane gas is natural. It is actually where you have out in the Arctic, where's the melting of the pre, whatever that, I don't even know what all that stuff's called, and I'm not a scientist. But that's what causes methane gas. The second part of this is agriculture. And a lot of that is caused by what? Manure. So, you know, I didn't come here tonight talking about threat, we're talking about it. It's caused by manure. But you know what? I didn't see any of them stop eating that barbecue. And I didn't see any bicycles in the parking lot. So, again, we have to live with risk. And, you know, the folks that live there, glad to hear what you got to say. And we should do everything in our power to minimize the exposure and risk that folks that live the coast of that plant. But the fact of the matter is, this is a very positive thing for Colton County. And if we don't get behind this project, we lose this project, we're, the progress that we can result, that could result from this is enormous. And we need to step up and support these folks from Sandy Cooper and Dominion Energy, because they are not our enemy, they are our friend. So that's all I got to say.
If this line, does anybody else have anything?
I just concur, and I think this council has already expressed this, you know, consent for the project, we have this seven weeks ago, if we need to put that in writing somewhere, you need to, you need to do that, as a director administrator, looking forward to something like that.
You know, I concur too, I'm 100% behind the plan coming in. We need it. One day we don't, your lights are gonna go out, and we don't have no power, so it's something we need.
Yeah, and people have realized, when we get power, we don't just get it from Kennedy's, it picks up at the Kennedy power plant. It comes in from Georgia, it comes in from all over the place, so a lot of people utilize this power. And you gotta remember, when SEG is what it was called that time shut down, we lost about $3 million, $3 million in tax revenue. We don't have a number on it yet, but I'm sure that this will probably be the triple or double the tax revenue that SEG has given us at that time, we currently know. But this can be a plus to our community, definitely.
I'll take your point of privilege as well. We have been read in, and concur with everything that's been said, we have been told in county government positions that rolling blackouts could be a real thing here, coming to a house near you very soon. I don't know where, and so, no major energy production investment in this state in 70 years. Seven years. Electric cars are pushing out our trucks, where are you gonna charge them? How are you gonna charge them? Where's electricity coming from? Now, we've listened to the, we've got, we've had Dominion Energy and Sandy Cooper, and actually Kinder Morgan came in and they expressed how they're on the pipelines. We're right, the pipelines are going northern track to the county, mostly through Sandy Cooper existing rail. They still have to renegotiate the railways, but it's going northern track. The tax revenue that can come in from this guy's is not only life-changing, this generation is changing, this is something this county is, this is a lesson I've been praying for. Everything I've gotten from this so far has been positive. I've seen no source or realistic information that shows this is gonna be as negative as anything I've heard. There's still some details to come in, so we'll see, but it looks very positive for this county, so we really need to get behind this project and question people, voters, when they talk about it. I'm just gonna leave it at that. There's some information I'm waiting to see, but this is what this county needs, is to help us with a lot of these issues. I'm gonna talk about the night and thunder all this stuff. So, I'll stop at that and get off my soapbox and go. Anybody else here? Okay, now, the ever-elusive minister of authority, can you go to that?
I try my absolute best to make these as short as possible. Y'all have just done your work to make it as long as possible tonight. Luckily, y'all have talked about, the only two things I was gonna talk about, and it worked with a lot of the underlying issues of it. First of all, our regional partners at both Dominion and Sandy Cooper reached out, asking us to, you know, basically write a letter of support as they work through PERC, and that's the Federal Energy Regulation Regulatory Commission, to look into viability of these projects. Now, Councilman Creve has passed a resolution in support of the Kennedy plant moving forward. This, I think we fall well in line with that, because again, this is a natural driver to make that plant come online. So, unless there's any objection, we're gonna be forward as they go to their next process with PERC. Going back to the previous point, and the point that many people came to talk about tonight, is animal control. First off, on behalf of staff, I wanna express my heartfelt condolences about what happened to your livestock. I personally went out there yesterday, through the weekend, I think several members of our staff, I think it was in the late Friday evening, were out there, taking a look at it. And that's, that's my staff and administration, so we do take it seriously. What we did is immediately took action, again, to echo Councilman Murdaugh's point, the code that was shared is something we were actually already looking into. That's part of Title VI, which has animal control under. We had a last public health and safety meeting about, it could take three or four weeks ago. We had some conversation come out of that, but again, what happened over the past few days has highlighted some of those deficiencies and the immediate need to address those, and speaking in manner, that's what we intend to do. So, Councilman Tripp and I have a phone call, we expedited this public health and safety committee meeting, which will be held tomorrow evening at 5:30. Staff worked through the weekend, that's pretty much all I did today, mine, I was about to go across. Looking at Title VI and our codes and ordinances to see what we can do to give, you know, animal control, sheriff's office, everyone, even up to the citizen, what they need to do and the tools in their toolbox to get the job done. But rest assured, you can take it seriously, and we're gonna act on it. But again, that's tomorrow at 5:30. We will have some public inputs, but the main reason is for the gentleman of that committee to sit there and go through the ordinance and look for deficiencies and path forward, so we can give our employees the tools in the toolbox to hopefully prevent all of this from happening again. And again, as much as we try to prevent it, we can't always put out every fire, but we need to respond to it in the right manner. So, I've heard you, I've heard some of the sentiments you gave, understand the staff is giving you a heartfelt condolences for everything that happened. With that, Mr. Chairman, I've tried to make it as expedient as possible. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 10 now.
Chairman, we'll move on to the public here.
Second. Motion, second and public here, any discussion? All in favor, some of us say aye.
Aye.
You vote. We're now the public here. You know, public here and I, aye, third. You know, public hearing, I have made, third reading, ordinance 25, authorize the execution and delivery of a fee and lieu tax, a special source revenue agreement, special source credit agreement, by, in between Colton County, South Carolina, and Banks Construction Company, which was previously known to the county as Project Star, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments and lieu taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there too. Do you have anybody that'd like to speak on this matter in public hearing? Do you have any?
Chair, I'll come out and add a public hearing.
Second. We have a motion, a second, from our public hearing, any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. We are out of public hearing. Moving to item 11, Resol Business, third reading, ordinance 25 dash zero dash six, to amend Title VI's vehicles and traffic, chapter 10.04, truck and bus restrictions of the College County Code, or laws to prohibit no new traffic on approved college county routes. So, second, motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Going to item, under Resol Business item B, third reading, ordinance 25 dash zero dash seven, authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee and lieu tax and special source credit agreement by, in between Colton County, South Carolina, and Banks Construction Company, which was previously known to the county as Project Star, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments and lieu taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there too.
So, move.
Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now moving to, uh, New Business, which is, uh, Resolution 25 dash R dash 47, to change the waiver, county council meeting date to the first Monday of each month.
So, move.
Second. Any discussion?
Yep. Chair. Would you fill in on why we moved in, why we do it, for the citizens to know what we do in it?
I will. We, we, I've always felt that, um, you know, when I started running as well, I felt that I wanted to go to the cities, cities, um, put a meeting in to this one, and I've got some citizens that have expressed that as well. Same reason we moved all the college to begin the year. If you've got something you want to respond to, or that you saw on the agenda, we want to hear from you before we vote on it. I mean, it's hard to vote on once we've been chewed up. But that, that is, that is your right to contrast us before an IP. So, this is the same thing as that, as much openness as to, uh, let you go to voting if you would like, and listen to the citizens, and that's all we do. I would also like to entertain a motion to add to this, revise this, to let me move the, September meeting will be the second Monday, because Labor Day will be the first.
I'll amend the motion to include the second Monday in September.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I assume, um, I'm the resolution, maybe it kind of does that, because we're having to amend our ballots. Is that right?
Yes, yes, that's the second.
What's that we're going to? Okay. We already knew that earlier. We hear that.
Oh, we got to move. Yes, sir. Any more discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here's unanimously. We go to item B, Resolution 25 R dash 48, to approve a joint use agreement between Colton County and the Rockland Community Center for recreational improvements. So, move. Second. We have a motion and a second on item B, is there any discussion of this?
I just had a question, and I mean, is this Rockland BTS community center, or is this Rockland community center?
So, this is items Bravo and Charlie under item number 11, New Business, are both an addressed community centers, one in the College, Cottageville community, and one in the Rockland community. These are allowing to go pursue hard grant funds. We can't pursue one out in that conduit or in a place, we're pursuing those, but answer that question better than that.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here's unanimously. Now, we'll go to item C, Resolution 25 dash R dash 49, to approve a joint use agreement between Colton County and the Cottageville Community Center for recreational improvements. So, move. Second. We have a motion and a second, all of the, any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Going to item D, under the, Resolution 25 dash R dash 50, to declare surplus equipment to authorize the sale in accordance with county policy. So, move. Second. So, move. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here's unanimously. New Business item B, Resolution 25 dash R dash 51, to approve the purchase of a 2026 Kenworth roll-off container truck for solid waste C and D landfills. So, move. Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yep. How much is this girl?
This is not, this is not, not that time. So, I'm sorry for that, there's nobody can, it's not, no, you're, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item F, Resolution 25 R dash 52, to approve an appointment of the Low Country Workforce Board.
So, Chair, I move that Kimberly Alexander, by acquisition, be appointed to the workforce.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All, here, first carries unanimously. We're going to item G, Resolution 25 R dash 53, to authorize acceptance and budgeting of various grants for fiscal year 25, 26.
So, move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion of this?
Mr. Chairman, I would have just one, but, uh, never mind, that's the next.
All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Here's unanimously. Resolution 25 R dash 54, to authorize the acceptance and budgeting of funds for the school resource officer grant received for fiscal year 25, 26, by the College County Sheriff's Office.
So, move.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion of this?
Chairman, I, again, I'm not kind of a advocate, we need the money, um, but I am just going to say, it's not, I guess, objection necessarily to providing a resource officer charter school, which is, you look at the district, it's a charter institute of diversity, and we feel like if you provide that, but again, grants needed. So, just wanted to put that over there. Anybody else?
I got a question. Don't say, are we spending any money on that, or strictly a grant total to them? That's not, no cost to the county.
Correct. What this, what this mechanism does is allows us to budget implement the grant funds on the state receivable. So, number one, it allows us to apply for them, number two, when they come in, it allows us to apply and to apply and to spend.
I got a question. Mr. Chairman, I, I have two kids going to charter schools, I lost them for taking out.
And I'm, my point's not that, it's just that we have many schools in the county, public and private, and, you know, we're not providing resource officers to all those other schools, so I just don't understand why we're necessarily doing this, but that's the money, and there's other positions that we're using, so I'm supporting the resolution.
Yeah, every school has a resource officer.
Yeah, but we pay individually.
Right.
Private school has to pay, but I don't need resource officers.
I got you.
But there is a grant available for this as long as that's the case, something to be paid for this section of children, that's just my opinion, I'm not, I'm not county blessed at this point, so I just, I just think I can take that. Any other question? All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any items for information, public record? We'll go to council time now, is there any, anybody else?
I don't care.
I don't have a question, um, I've asked somebody, and I'm waiting to get some information back. But I think we need to figure out what legislators or whoever's involved in the Kennedy plant, if we need to maybe find out how we can, according to public, so that they can call and give deposits, as much as a negative they get, I'd like to see how we're going to figure that out.
Mr. Chairman, I respond. Um, we're, we're working with our, again, partners at Sandy Cooper, Forest Dominion, and Pipeline Company, and then we'll be working close to their delegation. I hear rumor that there's going to be a good meeting in the lobby, so maybe we can, um, you know, circle wagons before then and make everybody's all in, trying to see.
Yeah, I just want to invite, tomorrow we're having a safety meeting, and if anybody here wants to come, it's 5:30, you know, you'll be, hopefully we can talk to them.
Mr. Chairman. I want to take this, just, just for information, committees, um, have three of the five things that, I will not be at that meeting, because I'm not on that committee, that is not in the like of interest. Mr. Trump will, um, gather whatever comes out, I think he'll bring back up the whole discussion, but I just want to make sure everybody knows that's, that's why you don't see someone, if it's not in the like of interest, that's just how the community is driven to work. Uh, Mr. Trump has been very involved, and so, he, uh, he'll give a call by conference.
Anything else? I just want to say, I wasn't trying to be rude early, we have a protocol we have to follow here, so we can't go back and forth, and we look totally out of control, so that was nothing to shut anybody down, it's just that we have to follow the form of those bodies. I'd be glad to talk to you afterwards, and we need to be able to make sure that it's like public information, so make sure we stick that to us personally. Um, at this point, we can, um, I can intercede, a motion to go into executive session?
A motion, yes.
Second. A motion and a second, so we can step, move, move. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. And now, the executive session, where we will be discussing item A, unanimously, concerning economic development. One, Project Fanatic. Two, Project Crab. Three, Project Badger. Four, Project Quack. Five, Blue Unkissed. And B, personnel contractual matter related to the office to be administered. We may or may not, we may or may not, take action, we may or may not. Thank you, we're in executive session. Thank you, your executive session.
Okay, right now, I would like to...
Chairman, I move to come out of executive session.
Sir.
Motion to executive session, discussions. All in favor, signal with a "a".
Aye.
We're out of executive session. During executive session we discuss matters concerning economic development, project fanatic, project craft, project badger, project quail, and deal agreements, fees, and a personnel contraction matter laid to the office of the administrator. At this time we have no action to take.
Chair, I move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Motion is second, and all in favor, signal with a "a".
Aye.
We are adjourned.